At this time, we would call to order the July 19, 2023 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. May we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Called to order at 7:04 PM, Joanne Chester.
Here.
Matt Cho. Ashley McLaughlin.
Here.
Adam Roche.
Here.
Nancy Yutman.
Here.
Charles Warmbrun.
Here.
And Harvey Welch.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
At this time, then, discuss approval of the minutes of a previous meeting. I trust that you all have the minutes of the May 17 meeting. Are there any corrections? Matt is coming in. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Do we have any motions?
A move to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Is there a second to that? Any one? A second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved.
Do we have any continued public hearings?
No.
At this time, then, we are ready for new public hearing. At this time, anyone who wishes to be heard tonight needs to stand and be sworn. None of you wish to speak? It's not time yet. You have to be sworn first. Anybody does not obligate you to speak, but if you want to be heard, you must be sworn in. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your ability? Thank you. At this time, we recall for hearing ZBA 2023 Major-02, a request by Tim Chow doing business as Bake Lab LLC on behalf of GSA Group to reduce a portion of the minimum front yard along North Lincoln Avenue to seven feet, eight inches, 49% of the required yard at 410 North Lincoln Avenue in the B3 general business zoning district. We have a staff report, please.
Absolutely. As you stated, on behalf of GSA Group, the owners, Tim Chow requests a major variance to reduce a portion of the required front yard at 410 North Lincoln. Mr. Chow is available tonight to speak on his request. The Urbana zoning ordinance requires a 15-foot front yard for lots in the B3 zoning district. Decreasing the front yard by seven feet, four inches, or 49%, requires a major variance. For a major variance request, the board may recommend approval to city council by a two-thirds majority vote, or approval with conditions by a two-thirds majority vote, or deny the request. The board should either accept the specific staff findings, or articulate their own specific findings based on the variance criteria. Staff recommends approval of the variance request as it satisfies the variance criteria. The variance request is for the portion of the Lincoln Avenue front yard within the length of the West Entrance alcove for a length of approximately 33 feet, shown in the pink rectangle and shown on the included site plan. Here's a close-up. It is roughly half the depth of the required front yard. So, let's see. Oh, my cursor's not showing up. Well, so the pink rectangle is the alcove, the entrance alcove into Gather Suites. It opens up into the foyer, and right to your immediate right is Bake Lab Cafe. They have a pass-through pickup window outside that connects into their order-taking area. This area would be for that 33 feet of that front yard, not the entire front yard. And it's, as you can see in the yellow block to the left, the encroachment into the setback, the architect has marked as seven feet, two inches. We are adding an extra two inches of buffer into that for the requested seven feet, four inches of encroachment. The building and Bake Lab Cafe both opened in August of 2021. Bake Lab provided outdoor seating in the West Entrance alcove using small bistro tables. The outdoor dining area extends to the edge of the sidewalk, which is where the applicant would like the pergolas to extend to. This is an aerial provided by Eagle View, and this is a close-up of that. This is showing in December of 2021, shortly after the building and the cafe opened, you can see the tables and chairs out in the dining area. The property line is actually at the blue line here. So, actually, the sidewalk is on GSA's property, and they have an agreement with the city to allow the use of private property for public access across that. The dining area would extend to the edge of the sidewalk and not impede the sidewalk. This summer, Bake Lab added two picnic tables and added two pergolas to cover the outdoor dining area. The outdoor dining area itself, with its tables and chairs, do not violate the zoning ordinance. The pergolas, however, are considered accessory structures, which are not allowed to encroach into the required front yard. The requested variance would allow them to extend to the extent that they are currently Here we have a picture from the middle of the road, looking east into the outdoor dining Little straight-on shot. You can see that the pergolas are on either side of the door, so they're not blocking access into the building. Looking at it from the north. The pergola posts are currently set in planters with approximately 400 pounds' worth of concrete to stabilize them. This is also, again, looking a little further back from the north. Little bit of a close-up. And looking at it from the south, looking north, basically from one of the seats in the dining area. The main change proposed to this would be adding a solar fabric, a sun fabric, to the top of it to add in shading and protection from rain. The extent of the pergolas would be as they are now. They would not go out any further into the front yard. Another shot from the north. So, the property is located at the southeast corner of University and Lincoln Avenues. The property itself is zoned B3. That's the yellow. I'm sorry. The property gather from a 2021 aerial prior to construction simply shows the demolished and vacant lot. Current residential uses are shown in yellow. There's some shopping uses shown in red, and then some social and institutional uses shown in purple. For zoning, the B3 zoning is shown in red. The R4, where the gathers townhomes are located, is shown in darker yellow to the south with lighter R2, single-family. Further south to the north is some medical institutional campus zoning, where Carl-affiliated properties are operating, and there's some additional general business to the northeast and to the west. And then there's some B3U university business to the southwest in the lavender. The staff report lists the current zoning and the existing and future land uses of the site and surrounding properties. The site plan approved in 2019 for the special use permit, which allowed multifamily residential in the B3 district, did not specify where the cafe would be located. Additionally, according to the applicant, no specific tenant was in mind when the building was constructed, nor was it anticipated that a future tenant would want to install a sheltered outdoor dining area. The applicant states that the outdoor dining area attracts additional customers, and the pergola would give customers protection from the afternoon sun and elements, and would provide a sense of enclosure to the outdoor dining area, especially due to the proximity of traffic along North Lincoln Avenue. The applicant's primary justification for the variance is that a coffee shop that relies on the visibility of its outdoor dining to generate customer traffic is more commonly seen in areas like downtown Urbana, which is zoned B4 central business, rather than in more auto-oriented business districts, which are zoned B3 general business. The Gather Building is designed essentially more like a B4-zoned business building than like a typical B3 building. Think of Jimmy John's, or a car dealership located along Cunningham Avenue, where people are driving to it. They do their business, and then they leave. The B4 district has no required yards, and the zoning ordinance allows accessory structures like pergolas to be installed up to the property line, unlike the B3 zoning district. The recent Urbana Public Realms study has found that many residents would enjoy outdoor dining and would like to see more of it. Stephanie McMahon, Urbana Economic Development Supervisor, is here tonight, and she's available to speak to that study if you have questions. Although the zoning ordinance allows many encroachments into required yards, pergolas encroaching into a front yard in the B3 district do not qualify to encroach, even though they share similarities with some things that are allowed to encroach into required yards. The staff report details the Urbana zoning ordinance requirements of the Zoning Board of Appeals to make findings based on variance criteria. The board must first determine whether there are special circumstances or practical difficulties in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance on the parcel in question. If the board determines that that first criteria of special circumstances is met, it must then use the remaining five criteria to determine how the variance will either serve the public interest, or will not hinder or impair the public interest. The staff report includes the full review of the criteria outlined in the ordinance, and I will summarize them for you. First, staff find that there are special circumstances due to the building's design, and this should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Second, staff find that the variance will not serve as a special privilege, as there are few businesses in the area and in the B3 district in general that have outdoor seating areas and cannot accommodate them because of the proximity of the building to the property line. This should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Third, regarding a self-created condition, the applicant states that they had not anticipated that customers would want to dine outdoors as much as has occurred, and that the variance is requested to meet the need for additional seating, shade, and privacy from traffic along Lincoln Avenue. Staff find that this should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Fourth, staff find that more customers would enhance the character of the neighborhood, and that other nearby cafes provide sheltered outdoor dining, and that the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and these should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Fifth, staff find that the proposed pergolas would not obstruct sidewalk traffic, or create a distraction to people driving by on Lincoln Avenue, and would not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property, and this should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Finally, staff agree with the applicant that the requested encroachment into the required yard is the minimum deviation necessary to provide a structure large enough to shelter the outdoor dining area, and this should weigh in favor of granting the variance. Overall, staff find that all six criteria weigh in favor of granting the variance. The staff findings are summarized in the staff report, and I would be glad to answer questions about them. Finally, staff, the Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options in case number ZBA 2023 Madge-02: to approve the variance as requested, based on the findings outlined in this memo, or articulate its own specific findings, or to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, and if so, articulate all terms, conditions, and specific findings, or deny the variance request, and if so, articulate specific findings supporting the denial. I would like to correct what the slide shows. ZBA has the following options: to recommend approval to city council, or to recommend approval of the variance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the request. My error on that. So finally, staff recommends the Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval of the request for a major variance in this case for reducing the required front yard along North Lincoln Avenue within the West Building entrance. That is the end of the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions. Mr. Cho is here as well.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions for staff?
It's our understanding that the planters are going to be in, the pergola's going to be in these planters, and they're going to be there all winter, 12 months a year.
That is my understanding, that the pergolas would be there, and the solar shade would be taken off during the winter months.
You mentioned something about, so the pergola didn't apply to the type of structures that would possibly meet, or we wouldn't have to do this? Can you describe that a little bit more?
So, for example, landscape features are permitted to encroach into a required yard. That would be things like landscaping. It would not include accessory structures. So, outdoor living areas, like a raised deck, in an R district are an allowed encroachment. Building ornamentation pieces like cornices and eaves are allowed to encroach into a required yard. So even though it shares some similarities, like it is an outdoor dining area, but it is also an accessory structure that requires a building permit. So there just wasn't an existing encroachment allowance that would allow a pergola in a business district.
Follow-up to that, I guess, I see the zoning and land use columns. There's existing land use, which is probably where we're coming with all these weird rules of encroachment or whatever. But I see future land use, and it looks very generalized.
That's from the comprehensive plan.
Is that kind of a future zoning plan that alleviates these things that we're dealing with right now?
So, the entries under future land use are those from the 2005 comprehensive plan? So it's from the vision document of the city? So in this area, it says this would be community business.
And then, I guess, does that, I know the comp plan is being developed right now in draft, so I guess, does the comp plan then feed into the zoning plan that helps clean up some of this stuff? So obviously, you know, like Gather, like you said, is not an R3-type building, and the anticipated cafe usage of it, even though there wasn't a tenant. I mean, ideally, there was going to be a tenant, probably going to be outdoor seating. Like, is there a way to prevent these kind of?
It is possible that staff might be directed to update or make changes to the zoning ordinance. There could be many things that would then allow pergolas in a business district. It could be something like changing the required yards in different zoning districts. It could be something like allowing different types of additional encroachments in different zoning districts.
Just like a planter?
Pardon?
Instead of a planter, a raised deck, which is currently allowed.
Right, yes. So, there is no, there's not necessarily a plan that certain things will happen, and then parts of the zoning ordinance will change. Between the comprehensive plan and the Public Realms study, different bodies might direct planning staff to look at changes to the zoning ordinance. Again, I will say that this is the first request that we've had of this type. So clearly, it isn't something like allowing a second principal structure on a lot without getting a conditional use permit for that, where we've gotten many of those requests, and which indicates that a bigger change needs to be made. This is the first one like this that we've had.
Also, kind of the first project, new construction in Urbana for a long time, probably.
Further questions?
I just have a question. Once you put the shade or covering over the top of this pergola, is it a pergola, or is it a porch? By definition, a pergola doesn't have a cover, true?
That is not correct. Pergolas typically have, they could either have a series of vertical slats that act as cover as the sun moves across. If you're familiar with the structures out at Riggs Brewery that have the solar panels as the covers, they consider those pergolas. That is a building code kind of differentiation. What the request tonight, though, is to allow an encroachment into a yard of a structure. It doesn't specify whether that structure is going to be a pergola or not.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, thank you. Does the petitioner wish to be heard? Come forward, please. You have to sign in, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Well, I think the matter is pretty simple. It's about outdoor cafe in corridor that's for everyone to see and to enjoy. And then so, from our staff and our team point of view, we want to build something beautiful for the community and for the neighborhood. And then so far, what we have seen is that seems like a lot of people enjoyed it. And Marcus has been working on these, you know, to figure out post-COVID business models on how can we build a more welcoming place for everyone. And I think the city also spent quite a bit on building a consensus and a policy to figure out how to increase food traffic in the downtown setting. Unfortunately, we're not in downtown, although we have a downtown-like buildings. And so I think that this is an opportunity to look into these, and maybe have a greater discussion later to define and to find out, you know, what we could do as a city to promote more business, and to make a place that's worth care about, and also to make a place that people can enjoy outdoor and indoor both. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are those some of your staff members here?
Yeah, some of them, yes. Yes.
Are there any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Is any member of the audience that wishes to be heard in favor of this?
I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I live around University Avenue.
You need, yeah, speaking one of the minds, Dan.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I live at Ten West University, just right around the corner. And when I seen this, I drank my drinks out there quite a bit. It's so much nicer, and it looks more like a neighborhood. It ties people in. There's not much like that, and it's very nice. I've been in a lot of different neighborhoods. I was up in Chicago, and Halstad Avenue, and they had a Starbucks, and they had something similar like that on the sidewalk. And it just, you sit out there, and it's like, ah, this is so nice. When I sit out there, wow, I wish there was a little bit of sunblock up there, because on that west side, it gets really warm, so it'd be nice. So just living right around the block, I'd go there even more if there was some kind of protection. And with the flowers there, I work at a flower shop, so I'm kind of prejudiced towards flowers. And I think it just enhances the neighborhood. It just shows that the businessperson really cares about not just being a business, but being a neighbor, enhancing the area. Anything in that area is really not, you know, Carl has a little bit, but Dairy Queen has a tiny bit, but anything else, I think it would really add to the charm of the neighborhood.
I have a question for you. How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
Seven years. I moved in, one of the first move-ins at Campus Circle Apartments. I've seen it change. I've seen that area, then there was a flower shop, then the bistro, and then it was empty. Now it's, you have that nice, really nice building. I've seen it really, really changed over the years. Remember, before my apartment building, there was just the old abandoned state building there, and it's all empty, and part of University Avenue wasn't very nice. But now with that building and the Green Street Realty building across the street, it's really changed, and you got Dairy Queen there, and it's nice.
Are there any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir. There were only two people that stood up when I swore any witnesses. Does anyone else wish to be heard, either in favor or against this? If so, you have to be sworn in. All right. Seeing no further witnesses, are we ready to, well, are there any further questions or discussions from the board or the staff?
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
So there is not a condition on the staff recommendation at this point to tie it to a site plan, which would include the pergolas as they are constructed now? If you wanted to add a, or recommend adding a condition to have general conformity to the submitted site plan, that would then tie it to those two pergola structures of that extent and general construction type?
We often do that when things are proposed that conforms to the site plan, so I think that would probably be a good idea.
About to say something to that?
All right. Are we ready to call the question, then? motions?
I move that we recommend approval of major variance request, ZBA 2023 Major-02, provided that the structures generally conform to the attached site plan in the case probably for us.
There is a motion that's been made. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's now been seconded. We ready then for a vote? Any additional comments from anyone? I believe then we are ready for a vote. Would you call the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Matt Cho?
Yes.
Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
Adam Roche?
Yes.
Nancy Yutman?
Yes.
Charles Warmbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welch?
Yes.
And Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Who had made? Who had made the second on that? I was busy taking notes.
That motion carries with the necessary votes to forward it on to the city council for their consideration and approval or denial. When is the next meeting, Marcus? When it will be presented?
It will go to committee of the whole on August 7th and then to city council on August 14th.
All right.
Change that to for city council. Okay, so, okay, it will be going to committee on the 21st and council on the 28th of August.
Thank you for your appearance today. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
We have any new business?
We do not.
The audience is leaving, so I don't believe we have any public input. Any staff report?
There is no staff report.
Anything to study?
Nothing to study tonight.
Your question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just apartments that have been built just north of here on Vine Street.
Yes.
You know, they are very close to the street and the parking is in the back. It seems to me like when you have these apartments close to the street, you have a lot of noise. A woman has told me the fire engines are going, the police cars are going. It's very hard to live in those apartments by the street. Does the city encourage parking in what I'm going to call the quiet area rather than parking close to the street so that the apartments have a quieter setting?
What the city encourages in an effort to try and bring more interaction between the residents and the street front, the businesses, is to not have parking between the street and the building, to encourage traffic along the sidewalk for pedestrians, for cyclists. An additional five or six feet of space is not really going to reduce noise that much. It's certainly not going to change the noise of a fire engine going by. But that, so that's how urban planning design promotes parking in the rear or parking on adjacent streets rather than between the streets and the buildings.
The other thing that it does is...
Oh, Joanne, are you?
If you had people exiting from parking on Vine Street, it would be a mess. Of course, in the same way, if you had a lot of parking from, the building was built in Nevada, going on to Lincoln there, it would just slow down Vine Street terribly. So you're better off going on the access street.
Coming off of green.
If it were coming off, if they were all coming off onto, directly on the Vine Street, just a mess. Have to come onto the side streets, you know, enter the parking from the side. Anyway, it's just a comment in terms of livability and how would you want to have your, frankly, apartment right next to Vine Street where you have people walking past your window?
The idea would be you can walk right out your front door and down to what hopefully will be a restaurant center downtown.
Right. But just a comment.
Yeah, and...
The fire trucks come down Vine Street.
So if someone has a preference to live like that, it might not be yours, but someone's, they're all occupied.
They are. And it is up to the developer to say how far back. I mean, there's no requirement that they're that close. If they wanted to set it back five feet and add landscaping between the sidewalk and the building, that is completely up to them.
We are adjourned.
Adjourned at 9:00, sorry, 7:40. Thank you.